Good morning and welcome to the regular session of Elgin County Council. It is August the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, nine A M., and I will call this meeting to order. First order of business is the adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted.
Everyone's had an opportunity to peruse those minutes. There are no errors or omissions. I'll entertain a mover and secondor. Counselor Latham and Counselor Noble. All in favor? That's carried. I will remind the members of any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Note that there are none. This morning, we were to have a presentation for a delegation from SCORE, but unfortunately due to the scheduling, that has to be rescheduled to the September meeting. Which brings us to the Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole.
We have a mover and secondor for that. Counselor Hans, Deputy Warden Jones. All in favor? All in, yeah, that's carried, thank you. Brings us to Section Six, Reports of Council Outside Boards and Staff. Six-one, the Warden's Activity Report for July. It's been included in your package. It looks like a fairly light month, although it started off fairly heavy. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Otherwise, the report stands. Seeing no questions.
Resolved that the report titled Warden's Activity Report, July, two thousand and twenty-four, from Warden Ketchabah, dated August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Counselor Widner and Counselor Cookett. All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Moving on to six point two, the Manager of Procurement and Risk Procurement Activity Report for the Second Quarter. That's from April first, two thousand and twenty-four, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to County Council. So this quarterly procurement activity report just details the awards of contracts that were approved by directors valued between fifteen thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This report covers the period from April to June of this year. The list of the projects, the supplier and the amount is included with this report as Appendix A. I can confirm that all contracts do comply with the county's procurement policy, and at this time, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Mike. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hooker? Yes, Counselors.
Through you, Warden, thank you. To you, Mike. When you've got the kettle creek bill for eighteen thousand dollars for landscaping, it says for the front of the building. Is that related to, I'm not sure if that's a one-off, or is that something that's annual? If it was annual, I guess you wouldn't be bringing it forward.
Through you, Mr. Warden, that is, that's correct. It was just a one-off to redo the front entrance way from the construction. They put some new landscaping in there, I think just recently.
Okay, do you know specifically, I just drove in through there and took a quick look. So when it comes to the new landscaping, just a bit of an understanding of what they did for the eighteen thousand, please?
Yeah, I know there was some new shrubs that was included in that. I knew there was some, they had to dig out a lot of the old dirt, put in some new, and they put in some new mulch as well. So this was quoted out with three suppliers, and this was the lowest bid.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, any additional questions?
Through, sorry, Warden, number two here, through the Warden to you, Mike, and thank you for your indulgence. When we talk about things like the ordering, and again, I find this very interesting. So the company we ordered the chair from, they also do maintenance for us. So is that contract based on how much we purchase from them, or do they just maintain the, so if we look at the chair? That comes in and we buy that, it's available online, I see for ten thousand dollars, but that's probably not the whole story. So the company that's selling us the chair is also doing maintenance. Could you explain to me how that relationship works, please?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. Is it, are you talking about the Arjo?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
So Arjo is a, they do maintenance for all of our nursing equipment in the homes, but there are new equipment that we also purchase through Arjo as well. So that's why they're listed separately. So the maintenance is an annual cost, whereas the one-offs for purchasing of new equipment is listed separately on that report.
Thank you, and just a supplementary, Warden, if that's okay. Arjo, that's a contract that comes up for their service agreement, that's a contract that comes up annually, semi-annually, how does it work, please?
Through you, Mr. Warden, that's an annual contract. And yes, it's specific to Arjo equipment, because we have most of the equipment that we do have in the homes, the lifts, the specialized equipment, is from Arjo.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Mike. Mike, I'm looking at the thirty-eight thousand for asphalt testing, is that for old surfaces or new surfaces, or a combination of both?
Through you, Mr. Warden, that is for new asphalt. So every year when we do asphalt paving, for the contract that we issue, usually around February, March, we hire a consultant that goes out there to test the new asphalt that goes down, and that's part of the process.
Okay. Anything further? Okay.
Resolved that the report titled Procurement Activity Report Q Two, April first, two thousand and twenty-four, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, from the Manager of Procurement and Risk, dated July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, be received and filed.
Having heard the motion, mover and secondor, Deputy Warden Jones. Counselor Widner, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Six point three, Manager of Emergency Management, Elgin Middlesex Regional Fire School, Modernization of Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act. Feedback, is Andrea here? Blaine's gonna deal with that. Good morning, Andrea.
Good morning, Warden Ketchabah and members of council. My apologies for not being here, joining you in the council chambers, but for health reasons, I thought it would be better for me to stay away from the rest of you and you to stay healthy. So in Andrea's absence, this is another example of delegating up. I will deliver Andrea's report to council. So if council recalls at our previous meeting, Andrea did bring a report to identify to members of council that the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act is under review right now by the province, and they are seeking feedback from municipalities across the province. So following the discussion and council's request that Andrea do some homework on what exactly our feedback would be, she met with a number of groups, including our emergency management coordinators across the province, or sorry, across the county, and reviewed the various sections that are being reviewed within the act. So if you look at, there's a couple of pages in the report that start with focus areas, and so focus area number one, really primarily focused on clearly defining roles and responsibilities throughout the act. There's always a little gray here and there, and I think one thing that Andrea is recommending is that those roles, responsibilities, you know, authorities, powers to do certain things at what, at certain times, be clearly defined as the act is revised. So the first focus area is really focusing on clearly defining those types of things. Focus areas two and three are more data-related. We're finding now with emergency management becoming so complex and so integrated across the province that a centralized resource database would be tremendously beneficial for everyone. So that focus area two and three, the comments that she's included in there, is really focused on more the data that could be or should be available to the municipalities as they're working through their emergency management activities. Focus area four does then more focus on those, excuse me, those emergency management activities and extending the compliance timelines, things like that. As members of council know, there are requirements on an annual basis for emergency management program reviews, training, tabletop exercises, things like that. Sometimes when we get through certain types of training, it's difficult to sort to get through that, incorporate all those changes and revise our plan if it's required, all within a short amount of time. So there's some comments there that she's included with respect to extending some of those timelines and working a little different program approach from that area. And then focus area five is really based on communications and collaborations with our First Nations communities. She felt, and along with the discussion with folks across the county, was that there's an opportunity to continue to build stronger relationships with our First Nations partners and our communities, and that should be clearly defined in the act as it's being revised. With respect to financial implications of some of these changes, it's hard to put our finger on exactly what the cost would be or could be potential savings in some areas until the act goes through its revision process, which, once we get through those steps and the act is, we're starting to see what the province is changing within the act, and we'd be more than happy to bring a further report back to County Council with respect to what we anticipate those costs and/or savings would be. So with that, Warden Ketchabah, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Blaine. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Sloan.
Through you, Warden, to Blaine. If you could just, this is provincial legislation, I believe.
Through you, Warden Ketchabah, to Counselor Sloan, yes, it is.
Okay, and I guess what I'm trying to understand is what the problem is that it's trying to solve, and I appreciate that it's provincial. When it comes to comments like the issue needed where we suggest that we need to expand alert-ready language translation, how does that apply to us here in Elgin County? Through you, sir.
I think it would be, and certainly I can follow up with Andrea, Counselor Sloan, to get you more details, but I think for the most part, one of the things that was found is that the, a lot of the intricacies or the technical information contained in the act is not available in as many languages as what it ought to be, given the makeup of our communities now, the changing demographics that we're anticipating, and that's something that I think our emergency management and our emergency response people deal with on an ongoing basis, is sometimes there are challenges with people's moving to our area or coming to the country, and you know, it's important that they be able to understand the emergency response protocols in our communities, and I think that's what they were trying to get at, Counselor Sloan.
Understood, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Blaine. Focus area five mentions ongoing communication with First Nations communities. What kind of communication do we currently have with First Nations?
Through you, Warden Ketchabah, to Counselor Cookett. I do know that our, the Elgin Middlesex Fire Training School, I believe, and I could be mistaken here, but I think I'm correct, that this was the first time that the graduating class of our fighter, fire training school did have firefighters from Oneida First Nations attended. So we are continuing to extend our relationship to those First Nation communities, Counselor Cookett, and I think that there's some tremendous work that Andrea and her team have been doing to build those relationships over the last couple of years.
Thank you. Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, two things. One, just a quick comment on the language access. I know for Malahide, we just recently had our Emergency Management Program Committee meeting, and the issue of the ability to issue alerts in low German, for example, came up, and they said, no, that's not currently possible, it's only French English. Okay, so I totally support this recommendation nowadays, there should be more accessibility. So just one point of clarification was, so these comments will be posted on the registry then, on behalf of the county? Just wanted to clarify that.
Through you, Warden Ketchabah, to Counselor Shiger, yes, that would be my understanding. These are the comments that we will be providing to the feedback, yes.
Wonderful, so I want, I know I had asked for this to be shared with council, and I really appreciate it because it's really informative and it helps us advocate further on behalf of the county. So thank you to Andrea and everybody else involved.
Counselor Noble.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to Blaine. When we're talking about all the changes in the languages, is this not something maybe the province should kind of take on? Because it's not just Elgin County or Malahide or Central Elgin or wherever, like this is a province-wide thing. And if every municipality or every county is taking this on on their own, it, the cost is probably four hundred times what it should be. So I'm just wondering if that's something we can talk to the province about.
Through you, Warden Ketchabah, to Counselor Noble, that's exactly our comment, Counselor Noble, is that it really doesn't make a lot of sense for each of us to try to go through those translation type of exercises ourselves. You know, the province really should be, it's their act, they should be helping us with providing those types of of responses to our various types of communities. So yes, that's, that will be contained in our comments.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, again, thank you, Blaine, for bringing that forward. And just to repeat Counselor Shiger's comments, thank Andrea and her team for the effort put forward and for bringing this to our attention. Catherine?
Resolved that the report titled Modernization of Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act Feedback from the Manager of Emergency Management and Elgin Middlesex Regional Fire School, dated August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Counselor Hans will move, Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Six point four, from the Manager of Economic Development Tourism Strategic Initiatives, the two thousand and twenty-four Business Retention and Expansion Program, the Final Report and the Action Plan. Good morning, Carolyn.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, through you to council. Today, I'm excited to share with you a project that our department has been working on for the past few months. Next, I'll just wait until that's up, and we can head to the next slide. So the Elgin County Economic Development and Tourism Strategy focuses on engaging with local businesses to understand their needs and working with them to create an attractive place to live, work and play. So the plan identified several initiatives and actions, including a Business Retention and Expansion Program. Through one-on-one interviews, the BRNE program aimed to address the needs of existing businesses, helping them to grow, and also providing crucial data to help us attract new companies and support new business creation. So with support from a leadership team, we interviewed a total of ninety-two businesses from seventeen different sectors from November, two thousand and twenty-three, to February, two thousand and twenty-four. We had high engagement and representation from all seven local municipalities. And the map on the slide illustrates the number of interviews we conducted in each municipality. And we also had strong representation from five sectors in particular, manufacturing, construction, accommodation and food, retail trade and agriculture. We asked questions and asked for feedback on a range of different topics, including business profile, business climate, workforce dynamics, future plans and community development. So to give you a brief snapshot of the businesses that we talked to, ninety-five percent of them were locally owned with seventy-seven percent operating from a single location. Most businesses had been operating for at least three years and fewer than fifty years. Eighty-seven percent employed fewer than fifty individuals, and most served customers in southwestern Ontario. Sixty-two percent generated over five hundred thousand dollars in sales. Next slide, please. Under business climate, we cover topics such as the availability of adequate housing, the availability of serviced land, the building and development permit process and support from Elgin County. So common themes from our businesses included that the scarcity of housing options and the high cost of renting and home ownership impacted businesses' abilities to attract and retain employees. We also learned that the lack of affordable serviced lands limited businesses' abilities to grow in Elgin County, forcing them to explore other municipalities for their growth. And while many businesses also reported frustration and confusion around the building and development process, restricting some innovation and expansion. And while Elgin County is generally perceived positively, enhancing communication, increasing outreach and promoting all regions can help address some of the concerns raised. Next slide, please. We also discussed workforce dynamics during the interviews. Fifty-three percent of participants reported challenges with recruitment, manufacturing being the sector that reported the most challenges in this area. So participants reported that the main reasons for these challenges were a lack of applicants, inadequate skills and training, and insufficient relevant experience among candidates. Retention was also a challenge for about thirty-two percent of businesses, with manufacturing again being the sector with the most challenges in this area. So key reasons for retention challenges included wages, seasonality, competition and other unspecified issues. On some good news is that sixty percent of participants are planning to expand within the next two years, indicating optimism about potential growth in the local economy. And the low number of businesses with plans to downsize, relocate or sell also indicates general satisfaction with the business environment in the county. In the community development section of the interviews, we asked businesses for feedback regarding what kind of changes they would like to see in the community over the next five years. The main themes coming out of this section of the interview included improvements in infrastructure and services, increasing communication and marketing initiatives, making more grants available for business growth, creating attractive communities, streamlining processes for new businesses and promoting rural businesses. So based on the feedback received from the participants, the leadership team comprised of representatives from each local municipality developed an action plan to address the main concerns and themes emerging from the program. So this first action is already underway, we are interviewing our community improvement plan. Feedback during the interviews was generally favorable about this program. Many of the businesses had received support from this program. There were some participants, though, who requested more grant options for agricultural businesses. So the review will ensure that the grants are relevant to businesses now and into the future. So the lack of infrastructure was cited as one of the main barriers to business expansion, and a master servicing study can help plan infrastructure development in the county and help businesses expand where they are. Another issue reported by businesses was a lack of affordable serviced land. So most parcels currently available in the county are large parcels, and they're at prices not affordable to our small to medium-sized businesses. So businesses looking for half an acre to expand currently don't have that many options. So an employment lands strategy can help guide policy development to ensure that smaller parcels can be made available to businesses. So the next three items focus on improving our customer service and communications with our business community. While participants appreciate the friendly staff, there is feedback indicating that support can be inconsistent. So to address this, it is crucial to establish a systematic process for ensuring that frontline staff are well-versed in the resources available to the business community. So when someone comes in with a question about a permit or something else, the frontline staff may think, oh, you know what, here's an opportunity to connect this person with the Economic Development Department, to connect them to the Planning Department. So again, really that education staff, so that all new and existing staff are aware of the resources available to the business community. So to improve the process of building and development, we need to enhance resources and communication channels for businesses. So this includes creating an easy-to-follow process map for building permits. So most businesses don't engage in the building process too many times in their operation, and this is something that they're not always familiar with. So having that process map will really benefit them in this as well. And also organizing training sessions for consistent permitting processing and providing those guides and toolkits to our entrepreneurs. So in addition, a targeted marketing campaign and hosting workshops and seminars on development can boost awareness and support for our businesses in this area. So apart from implementing a communications and strategy and expanding networking opportunities for rural businesses, one of the key actions is to establish a regular business visitation program. So an annual program would center on personally engaging with a select group of businesses on a specific theme. For example, once we address some of the issues around the building and development permitting process, perhaps we could target twenty businesses that had recently obtained building and development permits to get their feedback on the process and to be involved in that continuous improvement. So it's essential to acknowledge that we can't tackle all of the issues and themes discovered in our interviews by ourselves. By consistently involving our community partners and sharing our findings with them, we can address the significant challenges and opportunities identified in the BRNE. So some of the challenges around housing is something that we do need to work with our partners, so locally and also provincially and federally. Additionally, we are dedicated to publicly documenting the progress made on the action plan and participating in future BRNEs if major changes are identified during business visits or when we reach the end of our action plan. So I'd like to end with some feedback from one of our participants, and they said that I believe we should strive for excellence in this program. It's an effective way to survey taxpayers and supportive follow-up will pay off. Helping existing businesses succeed is easier than trying to land large industrial projects. Commitment to follow-up will pay off, and it also provides an opportunity for council and staff to hear success stories and positive feedback. And I would also like to thank the leadership team and our business enterprise facilitator, Abigail Moore, for their support and excellent work on this initiative. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carolyn, and I know that that was just a praise of the overall report. There's a lot of material here and a lot to be digested. And I assume the next step that this will be to share this with our local municipal partners and move it forward and to keep communications open. With that, I'm going to open it up for comments and/or questions. Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Warden, that's a great report, Carolyn, a lot of good things in there. And I'm not sure if you, you're probably aware of Evelyn's meets and shedding, and we just approved, we were very creative last night with zoning, and she'll be building a new building with residents behind it, which is innovative, I guess, and within the settlement area, which is sometimes a challenge, but you need landmass to do that, and you also need a a community that's supportive. But it's a very exciting, different way of looking at things from the norm, and it was approved last night, so she's moving ahead.
It's good to hear. Counselor Sloan.
Thank you, through you, Warden, just could you clarify, Counselor, or Deputy Warden? I didn't quite understand what was approved by your council, sorry. Oh. Okay.
I think it is, I think it's.
Thank you, through you, Warden, for the clear.
That hasn't worked.
It keeps getting toggled back and forth.
Somebody keeps turning me on. But with the proper site plan approval process, it can be done.
Thank you, Warden, and just on that, it's kind of, you know, nice to learn some best practices and love to hear more of that and how that might apply to other municipalities. We sometimes read about the good stuff that Malahide does and are copying them in certain ways, but I'm always interested in that kind of stuff. Quickly through you, Warden, to Carolyn. Quick question, you had on there, and again, as Grant, Deputy Warden says, a great report. Explain increased transparency as one of the questions that comes through on your memo, please.
Thank you for that question. So some of our businesses expressed an interest to get more frequent updates from the county, so sharing information on our infrastructure projects. One example was that at chamber events or, you know, the breakfast at the mayor's having an update potentially from the county and what the county is doing. So it was an ask that we share more updates with the business community on what we're doing. And so that is going into our communication strategy. How do we share our updates and share that information in a way that is relevant to our business community?
Thank you, supplementary. When we talked earlier today, do we compare ourselves, do you compare yourselves to other jurisdictions? The reason I say that is because if you're, I'll use the landlord analogy. If we go to the tenant and say, what's wrong? Versus we go to the tenant and say, here's what we do for you for X per month, and here's what other jurisdictions do, and you're getting a pretty good value for your money. Is there, are there metrics that we use when we're telling our end user exactly what Elgin County is doing for them? Thank you. Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan. Yes, yes, we do. So in fact, our businesses express general satisfaction with the taxation rates, which surprised all of us, and that is sometimes unheard of in BRNE. So there were, again, very few, you know, comments. And some people even indicated that they would pay more for enhancements in services. So there was general satisfaction. There were certainly some comments on some things that people would like to see improvements in. But again, compared to other municipalities, our businesses felt that they received good value for what they get.
Great. And again, find this very interesting, Carolyn. And just lastly, there's sort of the, here's what you said, and here's what we did piece. And I think that comes through in your communications. But we need to let these folks know exactly what your team is doing and address that. That's my piece. And just lastly, my thanks to Carolyn, our friends at Southold for the donation of a piano, which we now have in Port Stanley. This all is a result of me going to Rosie Rube Barb days, but thanks again to your team. We now have a piano that folks can play in Port Stanley. You're quick to rise to the occasion, and I want to thank you.
Deputy Warden Jones.
I'm so happy it's over building.
Sounds like it was a mutually beneficial arrangement. Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Carolyn, more of a comment than a question. Certainly a great report and look forward to communication with you in the future. I just wanted to mention that today in Elmer, we'll be doing a groundbreaking for a sixty-six acre industrial and manufacturing park, which is divided into many sections for businesses. And so it's fully serviced, and we look forward to filling it very soon with your help. Thank you.
Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I want to add my thanks to this report. It's a great first step in building the relationship with our businesses. I want to add, as you know, I'm a strong advocate of proactive outreach. And I would say, and we certainly have observed a lot of that, where sometimes some of our businesses find out a little bit too late about funding available or about permits that were required. And so I would caution about relying on the permits data as to like which businesses to go and meet, because those probably have already had a point of contact and have figured things out. We have, I think it was mentioned already, we have a lot of very creative entrepreneurs who I think need some support in sort of cultivating and sort of facilitating that idea. So what will you need? What permits? What funding is available? So as much as possible, if it's kind of abstract, but if you have any data on whoever's even thinking of expansion, for example, I would prioritize following up with them so that they're well-informed and well-equipped to envision and imagine their expansion with the proper permits. So great work, and the follow-up will be key. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Counselor Shiger. I guess Southold went through a phase where we were probably short-staffed or understaffed, I should say understaffed. And that creates a void when people come for permits because staff don't have time and just do the bare minimum. We found since we've added staff that we're able to facilitate the actual needs of the person and go a lot deeper. And this Evelyn's meets was a prime example where staff went over and above to facilitate what she needed. But you need the staff to do it.
Counselor Hens.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and a comment to Carolyn. There is some criticism in some of these comments from the participants and its delays and extra cost in permitting and building. And a lot of the planning and building permits are at the local level. So my question is, how do we get the information from this to the people that can make the difference? And it's about sharing this information and how how direct can you provide them comments to local staff so that we can improve?
So thank you. Our leadership team did have representatives from each local municipality, so they are aware of this feedback. But we do plan to work together firstly to map that building and permitting process. So having clear maps, that is an easy visual representation for staff. It's important for staff, but it's also important for those businesses. And then when staff are very familiar with what that process looks like, they're better able to answer questions when businesses have them. And also having some sit-down meetings with staff from all municipalities to talk about how can we streamline these processes for businesses? And having discussions about what has worked well in their municipalities, what has not worked well in their municipalities. And they can work together to develop those solutions. So I really think it's an approach where people share with each other and build on what is working and then look for solutions in areas where there is room for improvement.
Want to thank you for that particular comment, Carolyn, because you're absolutely right. It seems to me that the experience that we have in Bayham is simply a case that it's a lack of understanding of the process. And oftentimes, as you've mentioned, discovered within the research that business owners aren't particularly developers. They don't take on the process that often. But when they do wish to develop, then they perhaps don't understand what is required. And oftentimes in Bayham, we find that they lack the resources, not financial, but in terms of expertise to help guide them through the process. And this is what I think what Counselor Hens and what Deputy Warden Jones are getting at, and even you, that by opening that kind of communication up and developing these particular guides, if you will, to help guide the development process, I think will benefit all of our employers. But anyway, still, I'm a true believer in the report. I think it's a good, it's a good step. Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Through to Carolyn. That was a good report, Carolyn. There's a lot of information in there. Just have a question. You talk about people having to commute. Has it ever been studied how many people commute to Kami or to Toyota, you know, considerable distance? Because we don't want to drive people out of our own community either. We want them to live and thrive here. But it's a bit of a history lesson I received a while ago when the Ford plant was set down here and developed. There were supposed to be all these homes and all this business. It really didn't happen. There was a lot of people commuted to Ford plant. So what's your thoughts on, is there any studies been how many people commute from these factories in a distance or no?
I don't have data for particular factories. We do have a data around the average length of a commute for people who live in the area. And I believe that's around twenty minutes. So the average commute for people living in Elgin County is about twenty minutes. But I could certainly take a look at the data sources that are available to see if I could get more in-depth data with respect to where they're commuting to.
Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I know when Amazon came to Southold, there was paper that was presented that Amazon had produced. And it was a ring around the building area, and that's where they cited was where they'd be drawing from. And it was quite a substantial area. It was further out than I thought, really. And that depends on if they're an engineer or in maintenance, getting paid a lot more than the person packaging. But it was, I think it extended almost to Telsenberg, if memory's surging right. It was quite a large ring.
Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Comment concerning Counselor Widner's remarks about, you know, transit. It's too bad that SCORE isn't here today because one of the questions I wanted to ask about was the Southwest Community Transit System that SCORE has been working on for a number of years. And if you look at that map, you see that most of Elgin County is not serviced by this transit. So perhaps SCORE is one of the areas we can look to to improve the communication here.
I wish you'd make that comment next month because it's a great segue into a broader discussion on community transit, one that I think the county needs to have, for sure. And you're right, Elgin County is an underserved area in that respect. But it's something that we can look to SCORE in the Southwest Community Transit Program and see what may or may not be actually feasible for Elgin. Anyone else? Okay, again, a good report. Thanks to you, Abby. You stepped in the room. Thank you very much for the effort you put into this. I happened to accompany you on a few of these surveys and questionnaires and interviews, and I certainly appreciated that. I think we have a lot of good takeaways from this, and I look forward to developing, further developing the relationship with our existing businesses. There's nothing further. Catherine, please.
Resolved that the report titled "Twenty Twenty Four Business Retention and Expansion Program: Final Report and Action Plan" from the Manager of Economic Development, Tourism, and Strategic Initiatives, dated August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, be received and filed, and that council endorsed the Twenty Twenty Four Business Retention and Expansion Program Report and Action Plan.
Do we have a mover and second? Counselor Latham and Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Which brings us to Section Six Five, the Director of Homes and Senior Services. Homes Terrace Lodge Pool. Good morning, Michelle. Nice to see you again.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Thank you. So the report before you is the Homes Terrace Lodge Pool. The Terrace Lodge Pool was closed at the onset of the COVID- nineteen pandemic, as well as for some planned renovations to the change rooms. Renovations are now complete, and the pool has been provided with the required maintenance, and arrangements have been made for Southwestern Public Health to come out and do the pool inspection. Prior to the pandemic, most of you would be aware that the Terrace Lodge Pool was very well utilized by the St. Thomas Algen YWCA for community-supervised aquatic programs for many, many years, and by the Algen-St. Thomas Life After Stroke Adult Day Program for aquatic therapy. Over the years, residents of Terrace Lodge have a longstanding history of enjoyment watching the youth participants come and go through the front doors to attend their swimming lessons, often being present in the lobby before and after meals for potential opportunity for interactions, often kind of rushing through their meal to get down to see the young ones come in through the front doors. We do receive some ministry funding from the Multi-Sector Service Accountability Agreement for the use of the pool by the Adult Day Program. The prior pool rental agreement between the County of Algen and the YWCA expired during the course of the pandemic. And so county legal staff, myself, and the manager of procurement and risk did review the prior agreement and the insurance requirements and provided recommendations for change. And those are outlined in both the report and the attached agreement. But the highlights are just an update to the waiver, inclusion of requirements of an updated emergency measures, policy, and procedure, and a provision outlining Elgin's ability to recover costs if there's some after-hours maintenance costs associated to maybe contamination of the facilities, as an example. So affordable community access to the Terrace Lodge Pool supports health and wellness. It supports drowning prevention and water safety for individuals. As such, a recommendation of a two percent increase from the 2020 agreement to the annual fees paid by the Y for the period of this agreement is being proposed. And negotiations with the Y and myself were successful in securing the recommendations for change. If approved, the YWCA would then communicate the reopening of the pool and promote the resumption of community programs as per the agreement. And Terrace Lodge staff would be informed of the resumption of pool services, and the required orientation and training would be conducted. So staff is recommending a one-year agreement with changes as recommended in the attached agreement for the period of September one of this year to August thirty-first of next year. And the recommendations are before you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Cookett first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Michelle. Just a couple of comments, I guess. To be clear, the pool doesn't provide for any recreational swimming. It's programmed swimming, basically to teach.
Great question. So they are starting off with the Aquatic Swimming Lesson Program. Prior to the pandemic, they did have Aquafit, so sort of a recreational, but also a beneficial rehabilitation approach. Thank you.
Follow-up. Notice that $2,350 is really a bargain for the YWCA. That's great. It doesn't indicate, and looking at four point two, that says that the YWCA will provide a, I guess, a program. How many days are we talking about? Do you have a clear idea? Is it twice a week or once a week, three times a week?
Great question. Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor. So they're starting off with, because it's been a period of time without having the services, they're going to start slow. So with, I think, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday opportunities is what they're going to start with in the evening. And typically, they would run from four-thirty till eight o'clock. And then they'll see what the interest and the uptake is. Prior to pandemic, certainly, we were running five days a week in morning with aqua therapy, as well as the evening swimming lessons for the younger participants. And the Adult Day Program is on Monday mornings.
If I may, one more comment. The, it's a great service to the town of Elmer and surrounding community. What is the size of the pool? I've never seen it.
Well, I wasn't prepared for that question, and I don't see Ryan sitting. Oh, Peter might know the size of the pool. No, he's saying no. So I think the maximum capacity of the pool, don't hold me to it, is around forty-five individuals. So it's, it seems a large number, but that's the calculation that was done recently. So typically, you'd see up to a dozen individuals in the pool for swimming lessons.
Okay, Counselor Sloan.
Thank you. Through you, Warden, to Michelle. What's the cost of the pool on an annual basis, please?
A great question. I don't have that figure in front of me. It would be the chemicals for the pool, as well as a bit of time for our maintenance staff member to do the testing and maintenance of the pool. Certainly, if that's something of interest, I can bring that back if needed.
Sure. Through you, Warden. I wouldn't mind that information. We'd also chatted a little bit earlier about the cost per bed for long-term care, Michelle. I just wanted to ask you for an update of what the provincial average is, if that information's available, please.
Certainly, when we're looking at the financial report that I'm going to be bringing forward, that can be an inclusion in that report.
Through you, Warden. Thank you.
Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for this report. This is very exciting news because we've been asked by a lot of people for a while now, when is it going to open? When is it going to open? So it is a very popular program, so I'm really, really pleased to see it start up again. And wanting to clarify, because it is a great deal financially, and I don't think it's intended as a full-cost recovery for the county. I think it's a service that is much, much needed and well-utilized. So the fee will be, is a flat fee regardless of usage. So even if usage expands to three days, four days, five days, then it continues to be the same.
Yes, great question. So that is correct. And so the YWCA is a nonprofit organization as well. So a lot of conversation around that piece. But certainly, it would be helpful to look at the cost analysis. I did request that information, but without having the pool in service for four years, there wasn't anything recent to rely upon. But it's certainly something that we can consider, and probably a good suggestion, if agreeable, to council is in, this is a one-year agreement to bring those costs as part of the next year's report.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sloan. Sorry. And just on that note, through you, Warden. I take it the other two facilities above your home, in Elgin Manor, do not have pools? Has there ever been consideration given to pools at these locations?
A good question. So you're correct, they do not currently have a pool. And that's something that would have to go in a report to council if that was something that was worthwhile pursuing that as an opportunity. And that's something that would have to go in a report to council if that was something that was worthwhile pursuing that as an opportunity.
Anything else? Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through to Michelle. I'm glad to see this program start over again, but this isn't brand new. This happened a long time ago. We used to take our children to Terrace Lodge. You know, that was 30, 40 years ago and it was a great program. It was close and it was very well organized. So it's nice to see it back in progress. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing nothing further. Catherine?
Resolved that the report titled Homes Terrace Lodge Pool from the Director of Homes and Senior Services dated August 13th, 2024 be received and filed and that council authorize staff to sign the one-year agreement with the YWCA St. Thomas Elgin for the use of the Terrace Lodge Pool.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? We have Counselor Shigeru and Counselor Cookett. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Moving on with 66 from the Director of Engineering Services Transportation Master Plan Project Resumption. Good morning, Peter.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of county council. I also apologize for not being present in person today. I think I may be battling the same old debt or CAO as of this time. So I'm here virtually. So on with the TMP project resumption. Arcadis Professional Services was selected through a competitive RFP process to complete the county's first-ever transportation master plan. And council awarded that project to Arcadis, who was formerly IBI Group. And that was in March of 2001, March 2001. And then over the next 18 months until the summer of 2022, significant progress was completed in the plan. But it was purposely paused for municipal elections. And then in December of 2022, the project was paused indefinitely after the announcement of major industrial development in the region. And until those impacts of the transportation network were fully understood. Approximately 75% of the TMP was completed at that time. And unfortunately, we're going to have to take two steps back before we can take one step forward here. Over the past 18 months since the power code development announcement, new information and growth projections are now better understood and can be used to create a TMP that best prepares the county for the future. Arcadis was requested to provide a scope change order and a cost estimate to revisit all the work that has been completed to date and incorporate the most recent data into the TMP. The new scope includes revisiting the existing Phase 1 plan to reflect the annexation around the city of St. Thomas and also incorporate updates that we've incorporated in the county's official plan. We want to include updated population employment analysis and the most recent 2021 census data. We're going to incorporate the most recent collision and traffic volume information. Council will recall in 2021, we were in a pandemic and we were having difficulty obtaining relevant traffic information. So this will give us an opportunity to, to have realistic traffic information in the TMP. We'll also be updating all the planned provincial highway improvements that we now fully understand that will be happening around our region. We're going to be updating the planning horizon now to a 10, 20 and 30-year horizon years, which are now going to be 2034, 2044, which also mirrors the official plan, and 2054. We'll be reviewing and updating any needs to the active transportation network analysis as well as update changes to the transit network analysis incorporating new routes and additions by other jurisdictions. The project timeline assumes a project commencement in August this month of 2024 and completion date of July 25. The original TMP had a project budget of $235,000 and that includes $60,000 of work that was not completed. You recall, I mentioned we were about 75% there. We had about $60,000 worth of work still to complete to finalize the TMP. The new report from Arcadis has identified that there is an additional scope of approximately $100,000 work to complete on the TMP. And then therefore there's a total cost of about $175,000 work remaining. Fortunately, there's an existing 75, or sorry, I should say $100,000 in the budget that remains. And we will require an additional $75,000 now to complete the project in 2025. And that amount will be included in the 2025 budget for council's consideration. However, we are asking for approval at this time. Ongoing discussions with, with the province will attempt to recruit some or all of these costs associated with the development of the county's TMP because it serves as a planning document, so it will take growth across the region. Regardless, it's prudent for the county to resume work on the TMP at this time in order to be best positioned for the future. Be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Peter, for that report. Any questions from council? Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Warden. Just, this is something we need to get on. We need to get on it quick because things are happening fast. And right now, there's probably some money of the province to help us with it. And, and we need to understand where our roads are going to be 10, 15, 20 years from now and what we need to do now to get us there.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else? That's an easy sell, Peter. But that's good. Okay, as long as everyone's fully on board and we're ready to go. Catherine?
Resolved that the report titled Transportation Master Plan Project Resumption from the Director of Engineering Services dated August 13th, 2024 be received and filed and that the scope change order proposal from Arcadis Professional Services Canada Incorporated and the additional amount of $109,641 plus HST to the original contract be approved and that a project budget shortfall of $75,000 be approved to be included within the 2025 capital budget.
Okay, having heard the motion, we got a mover and seconder. Counselor Hens will move. Deputy Warden Jones will second. All in favor? That is carried. And thank you for that. Brings us to Section 7, Council Correspondence. We have no items for consideration. We have under 72 items for information. We have the letter from the Rodney Alderboro Agricultural Society. Any comments, questions? Time to go to the fair. Perfect. Okay. Shall we deal with the motion then?
Resolved that correspondence item 7.2.1 be received and filed.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Noble and Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Brings us to Section 8, Statements and Inquiries by Members. I think at this point, if you have a statement, go ahead, please, then.
I have an inquiry.
An inquiry. Okay.
Through you, Warden, to the CAO. Can I ask with respect to the budget for last year? The amount of the surplus and when we're going to be offered information as a council on our current costs versus budget, please?
Through you, Warden. Catch a body, Counselor Sloan. In speaking with Ms. Ford, her team is still working through the year-end audit, which does seem a little late in the year, although my understanding from chatting with her that last year it was even later. Normally, I would like to see the year-end audit completed and presented to council actually by a couple of months ago. In my, my previous life, that's when we normally did it. By mid-year, it was normally done, usually in the May-June timeframe. Given where our budget cycle is normally, and I think I've spoken to council about this on a couple of occasions. I'm, the plan is to back up the budget timeline to have the budget approved actually by the end of the calendar year for the next year. This year probably will drag a little bit into 2025. But then that will allow our team to start to turn their focus to year-end earlier in the calendar year so that it will be done earlier. There have been a couple of changes, I guess, in the, the legislation this year that our team is continuing to work through, even with some of the asbestos abatement in our buildings, things like that that Mr. Ducek and Mr. Terstren and their facilities team are working with our finance team to nail down a little bit further. So at this point in time, we don't have an exact number on, on what our surplus will be from 2023. But it should be relatively soon, Counselor Sloan. I'm, I'm thinking certainly within the next few weeks to a month is what I would like to see. And I will keep council updated on, on that as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any statements or inquiries? Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I did mention this earlier with Carolyn's report, but I want to mention it again. Today in Elmer, we are doing the groundbreaking for our industrial park, which is 66 acres of fully serviced land. So at 4 o'clock, if you happen to be in the area, drop by. Thank you. I think, Mr. Warden, you'll be there this afternoon.
It is my full intention to be there, but you might have to tell us how to get there. It's, it's up Elm, right? Okay. Thank you very much. So if you're in the neighborhood, drop by. Perfect. I just want to inform council, and I'm sure you're aware, but at the upcoming AMO conference, the county will be participating in three delegations directly. And that's with infrastructure, with the Ministry of Transportation and with the Minister of Health to deal with health recruitment on that particular issue. From an indirect point of view, we will be supporting the Planet Youth Initiative. And I believe that Mayor Preston will be taking the lead on that, but we will be there. There was another delegation. I'm not sure if it's ever materialized. Maybe you have some more information on that, Counsel, Deputy Warden Jones, on the initiative through the City of London, of which recent correspondents gave that to the Mayor Preston as well. I haven't seen any details on when or if they're even meeting in AMO on that. But that's five potential appearances that we'll be making now.
I did talk with one of the wardens to the east of us and yeah, there's nothing.
Okay, well, might make the schedule a little easier. All right, so, but again, the intention is to, for Elgin's delegations to make sure that information gets to those who are going to be attending the AMO. And I certainly have no opposition to anyone who has interest and wants to come with those delegations. Please do. Okay, and we will try to get those schedules out to people so they know. It may be a couple of days yet. Catherine's still putting things together, but we'll get that to you as quick as we can. The next fun thing is I want to invite you all, come down and practice your seed spitting prowess at the Watermelon Fest on Saturday, August 24th. We start off with a parade and that'll wind you so that you don't have so much wind off for seed spitting. But if you're so inclined, want to come down for a day of fun, we would certainly be glad to have you there. I think the parade starts at 10. Anyone else for any statements? Are there any notices of motion this morning? Matters of urgency? Okay, let us then move into closed session and then let's take a short break.
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section 239.2. Closed Meeting Item Number 1, Closed Meeting Minutes, July 23rd, 2024. And Closed Meeting Item Number 2, CAO Performance Appraisal. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. And that the Director of Human Resources be appointed as deputy clerk for the purposes of Closed Meeting Item Number 2, CAO Performance Appraisal.
Okay, do we have a mover and seconder for that? Deputy Warden Jones and Counselor Cookett. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. Motion to rise and report?
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and sector, Counselor Sloan, Counselor Shigeru. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Closed Meeting Item Number 1.
Resolved that the July 23rd, 2024 Closed Meeting Minutes be adopted.
Counselor Sloan will move. Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That's carried. Closed Meeting Item Number 2.
Resolved that the Director of Human Resources proceed as directed.
Moved by Counselor Sloan, seconded by Counselor Widner. All in favor? That is carried. Motion to adopt recommendations from the Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, now Deputy Warden Jones? Counselor Hens. All in favor? That's carried. Confirming by law?
Bylaw number 2431, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the August 13th, 2024 meeting. Resolved that bylaw number 2431 be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Sloan will move. Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? That's carried. Brings us to the adjournment by motion. Excuse me.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 11:18 a.m. to meet again on September 10th, 2024 at 9 o'clock a.m.
Counselor Widner will move. Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you for joining us this morning and we will see you in September. There is. We are adjourned.